All right, welcome. Thank you for joining us for the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals, December 1st meeting. As always, if I can get everybody to stand, if you can, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And if I can get a roll call, please?
Oh, that would be me.
It's you, yes ma'am.
Okay. Are we, are you the chair now?
Well, hi.
Are we calling you?
Right now, we are, yes, I'm currently sitting in the chair. Mr. Sackel is not here with us tonight, so I'll be sitting in as the chair tonight.
Okay, Mr. Kolsol.
Here.
Mylum, here. Pollock.
Here.
Pulad.
Here. Oh, I thought.
You guys.
I was the first here.
Yeah, okay, no problem. And Hantston.
Hadston, Kimberly.
Kimberly, it's, it's not on my list, so I don't know.
Hadston.
Hadston. Okay, we have to update the paperwork by the home with her name, but yes, okay, I'll type. Thank you.
Right. So Ms. Hadston, she's standing in or she's sitting in, she is an alternate, as voted in by the Charter Township of Washington. And then, as always, we have Dana Birch back with us and Caleb Alden. Thanks for joining us today. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Yeah, I'll submit, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence today?
No correspondence.
No correspondence, sorry. Old business, there is none. With that being said, we'll go straight to new business.
What do we got for minutes?
What's it?
Minutes, okay.
Yep. All right, new business, 58651 Glacier Club Drive, Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 3, Zoning Districts, Section 3.23, Note to District Standards, Bravo, Note to District Standards, Existing Residential Developments, Request for a 12-foot rear yard encroachment for the purpose of constructing an elevated desk. Do we have anybody here today to talk about that? Aye, welcome. Can you please step to the podium and state your name, please?
I'd like to make a statement first.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That I remember the Glacier Club, and I have no financial or else personal interest. I just want to make sure the board's aware of that. And also, like the applicant too, that I do live in Glacier Club.
Okay, my name's Pauline Tellerico, and we want to add a deck to the back of our house, and we're asking for a 12-foot variance because we already have a slab of cement, and we just want the posts to be right outside that slab of cement, the back of them. The front of the deck will be affixed to the house, but we'll need those posts on the end, and we don't want to have to tear up that slab of cement just to put the deck up.
Okay. All right, if I can just pause for one second, is everybody okay with that? No objections?
No objections.
Objections, you're not objecting to somebody on the board that's also in the Glacier Club? You're good, okay. Just wanted to make sure he's out, so we're all set there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um.
No, we're not.
Sorry. We're just gonna ask you.
That would've been the fastest.
I admire that, though. Especially of three items on the agenda today, and I'm sure two and three would be excited about that. Just a couple of questions. We'll ask you a couple of questions, and then we'll see if anybody from the public wants to comment on it, and then we'll get back, and just if anybody has any further discussions before we decide on the variance request.
Okay.
So you described the project, which is good. I was looking at the picture of the wetlands, like how far back your, your deck is actually going to go. Do you have the, about how close are you going to be, or how much between the deck and the wetlands itself? Because you have, you do have a unique piece of property in that behind you in the backyard, there's a significant portion that's just wetlands there.
Correct.
So you wouldn't be encroaching on necessarily anybody's property.
I mean, the, the deck is, or the slab of cement is already there.
Right.
Okay, so it wouldn't really be encroaching closer to the wetlands. It will just be built above.
Right, so you would, no drainage issues that you would see from anywhere? And then, do you have that distance from, I kind of saw on the plans, but I was wondering the distance from that slab of cement to where that, where the wetlands began?
Right, I, I never measured that.
Okay, that's okay, it's in, it's in the plans, and that's what I always thought, about 13 feet.
Yeah.
And the reason I bring that up is I'm looking at some of the other properties that were, that you also listed inside the packet, and some of them were 10 feet or seven and a half feet, so you would still have maybe a little bit more distance than some of the other neighbors that you would have there.
Right.
Was this, I was looking through the packet, was this, is your homeowners association, did they see the plans, and did they approve of the deck?
Oh, yes.
They did.
Yeah, they're included in the package.
Okay, very good. All right, does anybody else have any questions at this time?
I notice that we, we've approved others in the same area. Is there anything that's unique to this that we should be brought up, Dana, that you could think of? Is it something that's out of the norm that we've done in the past? Have we ever done 12 feet like this, or we only stop at 10?
No, I think that the greatest, like you just said, was 10. It varied between six and 10 feet for, for the neighboring properties.
I don't think we ever went past 10 feet out of all these on that street.
And the applicant has stated that their request is greater than the 10 feet because of that concrete slab that's present, so that's the only thing that's different on this property.
I understand.
I'm familiar with the area, and I noticed that where there's been, out of the nine that variances have been made, there's five that are adjacent to the wetland. And based upon the other, other variances that were granted, yours is not anything that's, that should not be disapproved. And I know that a lot of the area there, you know, most of them have, have some smaller lots, too. So that's kind of a hindrance as far as putting a deck in.
I really couldn't hear you.
Okay. Like, I'm aware that of all the variances, there, like, there were nine that were approved, and then there's seven, five, five that were similar to yours as far as the decks backing the wetlands. And so it's, I, I don't see a, like, issue with you having it approved at all.
Oh, okay. I just, I had one question. So the deck would be for the upper portion, I'm looking at the pictures that you provided, so thank you for those. And I'm noticing that you don't currently have a door wall.
Right.
Is that being installed?
Yeah, that will be installed.
I see, okay.
Okay, probably in the spring.
And I'm assuming, is that like your kitchen area up there?
Yeah, that is the kitchen. So there will be a door wall that will cover both of those. We'll take out those two windows and put a door wall in there.
Yes, makes sense.
No other questions, we want to open it up for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Hadston, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charter Township of Washington Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 1st, 2025, in the boardroom of Washington Township Municipal Building. For Steve Tellerico, did I say that right?
My husband.
Okay. 58651 Glacier Club Drive, Washington Township, Michigan, 48094, by reason of Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 3.0, Zoning Districts, Section 3.23, Note to District Standards, Bravo, Note to District Standards, Six, Existing Residential Developments. The purpose of this request is to request a variance which, if granted, would allow the applicant to construct an elevated desk, deck, sorry, that will encroach 12 feet into the established rear yard setback in the Glacier Club Phase 4 development. The rear yard setback for this unit is 25 feet measured from the edge of the building envelope to the rear property. The property in question is parcel 24-04-33-127-049. All property owners within 300 feet have received public hearing and notice. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right, one last second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anybody have any further questions?
Oh, looks like there's only two more on that street.
All right, that's kind of.
So that's, that's 48, next to you, 46?
48 already has, has their patio there, and they had it built when, they had that added when they built the home.
Okay.
So they probably wouldn't be asking, they wouldn't be building bigger. At least, I don't believe they would.
All right, well, now I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request made for 58651 Glacier Club Drive, parcel 24-04-33-127-049, for variance from the Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 3.0, Zoning Districts, Section 3.23, Note to District Standards, Bravo, Note to District Standards, Six, Existing Residential Developments, and allow for the construction of an elevated deck that will encroach 12 feet into the established rear yard setback in the Glacier Club Phase 4 development. The rear yard setback for this unit is 25 feet measured from the edge of the building envelope to the rear property line. This decision was based on the criteria outlined in the Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Section 7.9, Echo, Zoning Board of Appeals, Variance Review Procedures. Number one, practical difficulty. Strict enforcement of the rear setback standard would create a practical difficulty. The existing home sits 29 feet from the rear property line, leaving only four feet for a deck. This prevents the construction of a functional deck and limits reasonable access from the second-story kitchen, as you said. It's a unique circumstance. The circumstance needing this variance are unique to the Phase 4 of the Glacier Club development. These phases are governed by consent judgment that does not include the township's standard allowance permitted for decks to encroach up to 10 feet into the rear yard. There are also wetlands that exist in the rear of the property, and this will not be encroaching on other, other residents' properties or causing a drainage issue. Number three, the condition was not self-created. The need for this variance was not created by the applicant. The building envelope, rear setback, and consent judgment restrictions were established prior to purchasing your home. The house is designed, including a second-story kitchen and existing 14-by-18-foot concrete patio, was constructed by the previous owner. There's no special privilege. As approval of this, there's been, as stated, at least nine similar variances that have been approved along the Glacier Club Drive, allowing deck encroachments between six and a half to 10 feet. Granting this request maintains the consistency with the previous EBA decisions, and therefore, the spirit and intent of this ordinance, the Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, allows for that 10-foot encroachment. You'll be going two feet beyond that in standard residential districts. The subject property abuts open space in nearby homes, including decks and patios. Approving the variance will not alter the neighborhood character and aligns with the ordinances that tend to support reasonable residential use.
Just a second of that.
So we have a motion by, seconded by Pollock Kolsol.
Yes, to approve.
Yes, to approve.
Holdson.
Yes, to approve.
Pulad.
Yes, to approve.
Mylum, yes, to approve.
Congratulations.
Now I can leave?
Now you can leave, thank you so much. You did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Okay. New business, number two, 669700, Powell Road, Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 3.0, Section 3.18, Front Yard Setback Requirements. For this, a front and street-side setbacks shall be measured from the center line of each right-of-way in accordance with the township's master plan, designation in the Road Commission of Macomb County as follows. All secondary roads, including Powell and 31 Mile Road, should have 110 feet of setbacks. A 44-foot variance is requested from the front yard setback requirement off of 31 Mile Road. This is for parcel 240412200-018. Is there anybody here to talk about that? Aye.
Good afternoon. My, my name is Albert Pradutai.
Can you state your address, too, please?
It's a. 66970.
Okay.
Powell Road.
Okay, Holdson, tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do and what the variance request would be required.
So we purchased that land like, almost like one year ago, and we just actually start like moving forward, like we did the surveyor and the plot plan. And when we saw that, actually, on that plot plan, it's like, because of the setback, like, one, like, they required like 110 from each road, from Powell and from 31 Mile, which the front, actually, it's like, we try, I mean, we tried to get it from Powell Road, the front of the house, so like the side, let's say, is 31 Mile now, we just did a variance there because it's like, it's just like 30, 39 feet, I, I believe, the, the width, the, the plan, the plot plan, because it was a corner lot, actually. We didn't know that till I saw that plot plan. I was like surprised, so that's why we just applied for the.
When you purchased it, you didn't know that it was the, the corner lot or that they were both secondary roads?
I'm sorry?
What was it that you didn't realize when you purchased the property?
No, like, I mean, when we purchased, like, we thought we, there, there are setbacks, basically, they're required, like, because, I mean, I'm not, not engineering, but they just, they just told us, like, whatever, to, basically, to do the, the perk test, and, but we didn't know, like, I mean, to do whatever the, the measurement or the engineering, like, how big we can, we can fit the house there, because we're trying to build it around, like, approximately like 3,500 square feet house, so.
That's what you were looking for?
Yes.
About a 3,500 square foot house, okay?
We also had only 30 days.
Oh, can you please step to the microphone, just say your name? Yep, thank you, it's just for everybody watching.
I'm Desara.
Hi.
So we also had 30 days to close when we, you know, initially saw it. They told us, I mean, it took that much time just to do the perk test. It would've been nice if we were able to do the plot plan originally, because we would've known all this before we bought it, obviously. This is obviously not a business investment. This is a home that we're trying to build to live in it and have a family and everything. But the width is like, it's very, the shape of the land, it's like a long rectangle, so it makes it very difficult. Basically, we just want to build a ranch.
Right.
Is what we're trying to do.
Questions?
It just doesn't fit.
Based upon the Road Commission asking for the variance or, you know, based upon ordinance, what, what obstacles are there for them to build that house? Do they need that right away, the Road Commission? Or what's, what's the issue with the, with the variance?
I can answer this one. So in Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, the setbacks are measured from the center line of the road because the township doesn't have jurisdiction over its roads. The county maintains all the roads. The county has what's called a right-of-way master plan that looks at how wide the roadway could be in the future and how much right-of-way they want to preserve for utilities, for pathway, for road. The secondary roads have a wide right-of-way. I think I have it identified in here, I'm trying to remember. If anyone finds it before me, thank you. For, for 31 Mile, they have a 120-foot right-of-way master planned, which means with that variance, if that future right-of-way is built, you're like six feet or something crazy. Yeah, six feet from your home to where their right-of-way line would be. And so that's, that's the obstacle that the setback ordinance is trying to protect against.
Gotcha.
I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. It's not our total requirement, it's the Road Commission's.
Gotcha.
I see. So like, I, I just saw an email there, like, to, like, to know exactly, I mean, I was like two days ago to measure, which I believe from, from where the building, let's say, if we build it, that's, I mean, how we requested, if we build it there, the structure of building to the, to the raw, which they call like 33 feet, it's like 31, 32 miles, 31 and a, 31 feet, 31 and a half feet from, exactly from the structure of the building, if we, let's say, if we build it to the raw, like, because the raw, I believe, to the center is like 33 feet. So, but from the raw to the house is like 31 feet, 31 feet and six inches approximately right now. So that's, that's how, right, for example, now, I don't know, like, the future, but that's, that's the distance.
And I guess if it's a, if it's too much of a setback that we're requesting, I guess what would be an appropriate, or would be a little bit more appropriate, so we're not, like you said, like, four feet or six feet away from what, whatever they're. so we're not, like you said, like four feet or six feet away from whatever they're doing in the future with like the sidewalks and, you know, when we build a sidewalk and everything. Like, is 40 feet more appropriate, or, you know, I guess what would be more appropriate that, reasonable?
When we're looking at this, we're looking at the fact that Washington Township doesn't own its road, so it's difficult for us to give away what the county is going to require. So one of the things that happens here on the zoning board is, yes, we have the authority to grant variances, but then should we do something that is outside of the five criteria here, we could be liable to be sued by any certain party. It could be a neighbor, it could be the county, it could be the township itself that says, you gave away something that wasn't yours to give away. So when we're looking at this 44-foot setback, that's a significant portion that, that the county has already declared as theirs, is the 120 feet and that was put in place, part of their master plan that's been there for, for, I don't know how long, but it's been there for a while.
Just, sorry, just, just a minor point on that. So the county doesn't own that property right now? The master plan is just their vision for how wide they anticipate that corridor being, so...
Okay.
Yeah, a little, little nuance, but...
So 110 feet at 31 Mile, it's 120 feet on Powell? Or is it the opposite?
Um, are you, are you talking about the county's right-of-way? Are both 120 feet?
Both 120?
Yes, and so the setback from the center line for homes on both of those streets then is 110 feet.
Okay.
Unfortunately for me, you're not even close. I mean, it's so, so far on the wrong side of this. I personally could never vote yes for it, because I would be afraid for your safety. I would be afraid for your household in the future, what that would maybe mean to you. And sometimes we get in a way where we want to do what's, you know, make you happy, make you happy, but at the same token, I'm worried in the future, you could come back, have little babies out there, have somebody in your front yard or so close to your house. That's my main concern. Or in the future, if we have to, if we need that space or need that road, then we're having to pay you for that land back, you know, to, to use that. So that's, those are my greatest concerns.
Well, there's another question, too, that you would have to build a sidewalk on both Powell Road and...
Yeah, we're aware, we know that.
She, she told me.
We talked about it, you know?
Yeah, I did, I did let them think.
I'm like, I mean...
We're aware.
I'm like, that's, that's fine, we just, we just, we just wonder whether they build a house there and whatever.
So your house is going to be 3,500 square foot?
Yes.
A little bit less, like 34 something?
34, 35, that's...
That's the reason I've got something here, 4,100 square feet, square foot house.
Well, maybe they're, maybe they're talking a lot.
Yeah, that's what we measured from the architectural drawings, it wasn't provided. So if the scale is off, that could have...
No.
Either way, it's going to be a decent-sized house and a footprint. It almost seems like because of our setbacks that we're dealing with in Macomb County, we're trying to, the old saying, putting 10 pounds of potatoes in a pound bag and stuff. It's kind of like out of our control that...
I was also looking at some of the plans that were drawn up, and I noticed that although the proposed setback for the front was, that's where we're, we're having the issue, it did say in the back, the minimum rear setback, which is 50 feet. It did say you're 91 feet. I don't know if that's the whole area, or is it possible to push that house, your house, further back a little bit?
No, like, I mean, like, doesn't matter, we can start even on 110, like that's wherever the architect, wherever when they draw, because the lot is like, it's long, it's huge.
It's just very long.
It's very, very long.
And narrow.
But because of the, like a corner, because they request like 110 feet setbacks, that's why like the, the shape is really like...
There's, there's locked in, no matter how they move down.
It's unseen, I mean, since I saw the plan, the plot plan, I'm like, I didn't realize.
Maybe a different style house, maybe a split ranch? With the, like, some bedroom up, I don't know.
Yeah, because if you go back any farther, you're, 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 your setbacks behind you.
Yeah, we try not to get into the neighbors either.
Yes, right.
We looked at it both ways, to be honest with you. Like, we don't want to get closer to the neighbors and make it difficult for them, either side.
Yeah, it's 30 feet, 30 points, whatever's a little bit on the side.
The one side and the 50 on the other side.
But the back, the back and the front, basically, because the front is from, like I said, just to be correct, from Powell. So like, it's 30 something there, and then, like, we ask whatever that's, whatever the 44 for, for the 31 Mile.
Six feet.
It's just not enough.
I mean, we, like, I, like, I talked, I talked to my wife, too, like, because we've been actually concerned, I mean, we just searched whatever, like, what happened there and blah, 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 but... So we've been concerned about the safety, too, actually, from the 31, if it's like, if it's like too close, let's say. Which the only thing, like, like, as I, I showed her, like, it's, they just make a ditch now, because they're, they're, whatever they fixed in the road there. And then also there are all like, pretty much like a lot of trees, and like, that's why I told her, like, I mean, they may not be a problem. I mean, God forbid, I mean, nobody knows, because, but, that's why we was just like concerned, like to ask for, for the variance.
Right, right. After sitting up here through an accident where the car jumped over the road, seeing that happen, trying to fix a problem that we've approved a long time ago, I can't in good conscience.
Right, right.
Have you had any other plans drawn up that would show maybe less than the 44 feet?
We have one that...
I have one.
Do you want to hand it right down the center?
Then we're looking at that. So what we're looking at is plans that maybe is a different style.
Yes, different style, because that, I mean, that's what we liked, was the first one.
But this is your runner-up?
Yeah. But the architect, he gave me another idea, he's like, I mean, just, it's not possible now.
Right.
How far is it back?
The setbacks, basically.
Yeah, that would be a 32-foot setback is what I'm looking at.
So that would be reduced to 32 instead of 44?
Correct.
Yes.
We're still not, we're still not even close.
And this other plan that you have here, how far is it from that 31 Mile to your house?
From 31?
Yeah.
With that one?
Yeah.
Like 70, what's it called, like?
72 feet.
72 feet, from, from the, from the right way, basically, from the center of the road.
72 feet, and they're, they're asking for 120.
30, 32, I believe, I'm not sure.
You're going in the right direction, but still, you can't go back.
And now if I was looking at that plan, is it 30 feet setback in the back?
Yeah. So, only 72 in 31 Mile.
Does it say how big that plan is, as far as the size of that home? Do you know what the size of that home was?
It's approximately like 35, 30, yes, it's the same, like, that's why I asked her, like, I mean, we're not going to build it like more than whatever, like 35 hundred square feet, because...
Just the setback is less. It's probably longer versus...
But it's longer, because she put like the garages on one side, and she just actually make the house longer. That's what she was trying to, yeah, to build it.
Is there a reason that, that width is needed? Because I know in our township ordinance, the minimum width for a single-family home is 24 feet across any elevation. And it looks like with the, the building envelope that you have after the setbacks, it ranges from 40 feet to 50 feet approximately, is that, is that right? So I'm curious what, what that does to the layout to condense it versus what you're proposing, which is wider.
You mean the width of the house?
Yeah, because that's the constraint, it's not the, like, the footprint size, it's really the width that you're seeking the variance for.
Yeah.
So what, what does that do to your layout if you didn't have the width? What does it change?
We'd be able to build a ranch, to be honest with you.
So like, as, as we, as we talk, because actually we was trying to get the, whatever the plan, what we like, I mean, we was working on until she asked me, like, to do the, what's it called?
The plot plan, we didn't know it was done already.
Then, that's, that's how she was like built, whatever, like, having, whatever, for example, making that the ranch house, like 3,500 square feet. Then when we saw the plan, whatever, the, the plot plan is like 39 feet. So like, she's like, no way I can, I can't fit it, even, only if you make like something like too long, but she's like, it's very hard to get the structure, or whatever to build it and all that stuff.
For one story.
For 30, 35, like, for that's 39, because actually that's the, the outside, that's what she, she asked me, because she's like, that's the outside building, which they're going to count the walls, the bricks and all that stuff, so inside will be like very less.
Okay.
That's what, that's what she, she explained to me, as far as I'm concerned, so...
I think you have to be creative with that garage and that space and potentially put that garage more towards the back of your lot and use a breezeway to connect your garage, because everybody wants an attached garage in Michigan. But somehow get your building envelope to be more narrow to fit on that lot. You just have a teeny bit more homework to do, or you have to figure out a different lot for that size house. That's just one opinion.
Does anyone have anything right now, or do we want to open it up to public hearing?
Make a motion for public comment?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Notice is hereby given that the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 1st, 2025, in the boardroom of Washington Township Municipal Building. The purpose of this meeting is to consider an appeal for Albert and Disara Preducha?
Preduka.
41807 Langley Drive, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48313, by reason of Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 3.0 zoning districts, section 3.18, front yard setback requirements. A, front and street-side setbacks shall be measured from the center line of each right-of-way in accordance with the township's master plan, designation and the road commission of Macomb County as follows. Secondary roads, 110 feet, 31 Mile Road. The purpose of the request is to request a variance, which if granted, would allow the applicant to construct a single-family resident home that is setback 66 feet from the center line of 31 Mile Road. The zoning ordinance requires a front yard setback to be a minimum of 110 feet, measured from the center line of the road, making the variance that is requested 44 feet. The property in question is parcel two four zero four, one two, 200 dash zero one eight. Six six nine seven zero, Powell Road. Location's on the southeast corner of 31 Mile Road and Powell Road. All property owners within 300 feet have received a public notice, hearing of the notice. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk about this? No correspondence? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think where I'm at right now is that, just with the danger, with the drainage and, and the roadway itself, and with the master plan that's been put in place, it's tough to look at approving a setback that might not end up working out. And I know you've come with some other drawings. You've had a couple options, you had your primary and a secondary option. And I think you're getting closer, but I think you may require a variance, some relief, but this is just a big amount of relief to ask for at this time.
So, may I make a motion to deny?
I was actually gonna, I was thinking we could make a, if you're coming up with plans, would you be willing to postpone and then maybe come up with some other plans that might, might still that way? Because you've already put in your variance request and maybe you kind of see the, why, why work, kind of put us in a hard position here and why it's difficult for us.
Let me ask you before you do, do the backside of your property, I didn't, I went down there, but is there, is there a possibility you could own some land behind it, move your house back?
Not, not so much, because the, that side, for example, like the neighbor, like goes downhill and they, they have like a, like a water, like a wet zone. So like, because actually the architect, she, I mean, she was there to see it in person, and she's like, we can't like, like, like go like too far that, that side.
You can't push the house back that far there?
Little bit more, but not like, she, she told me not too far, because we can't, we have to build a septic tube in that back area, which, when we did the perk test. That's what, that's what she, she...
We had instances before where even a commercial building, we didn't pass something and they went in, but property next door, and McDonald's was a prime example, we did. And they scooted over and they made everything work. I was just thinking maybe an option there where you could move your lot line a little bit, but obviously you can't. I mean, obviously you can't, you can't go on the wetlands, but...
Right, right, that's...
Moving your line is enough to think about, I don't know, I guess you can't, 44 is a lot of... I can't see us, I can't vote for something like that, that's, that's a big variance. It's a little bit too much, reasonable here, but that's, it's a little bit too much, I think.
Would that be something you'd be interested in, trying to come up with something, maybe not quite as...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was trying to say, like, even the, if the new one, because, the new plan, because she's like, if, like, nowhere we can like get, whatever, that's what, whatever she told me. She's like, because in 39, wherever, that fit, she's like, it's very, very tiny.
Very narrow.
Very narrow.
Right.
And she's like, I mean, whatever, what we, they can give it without any, whatever, have a problem in the future. She's like, I mean, that's...
Usually when we look at variances, especially, I mean, it is, it is, no one's denying that that's a unique piece of property, though, that, that needs to be developed, and, and maybe that, it just, we can't develop it with that, that size house at this time.
I know, I feel like you want us to give you an idea or a number of what would be acceptable.
Yeah, so we can find another...
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to do that. So I would ask that you kind of look for old case law, provide something that shows you, maybe an example somewhere else. I don't have one for you, but look for other examples within the county, since you're going up against a county roadway. Maybe come to us with something like that to help your case, because right now, we can't give you a number. We can't arbitrarily pick like, oh, if you came back at 10 feet or 5 feet, or, we, we don't, we're not, we don't have the ability to do that. I want to help you, I know Troy wants to help you, all of us want to help the residents. But at the end of the day, we have to somewhat follow these rules, so that we're good for everybody.
Right, right.
And I know we've seen, reaching out to the road commission themselves, sometimes they'll, they'll provide some sort of, at least tell you why, you know, what their thoughts or their master plan that's in place, and what they can do for you, or what, but when we're talking about 33%, we're usually within, you know, 3% or 4%, or something, it's so much, much smaller than what you're looking at at this time.
The best bet for your money is to ask us to postpone this for you? And, and maybe reconvene, think about it a minute, and come back? That's the best bet for you personally.
And what I'm gonna say is, and when, when I come, so I'll make a motion.
Can I just say something real quick? Due to the holidays and us being closed, if the applicant could, maybe this could be postponed to like the February meeting to give a little bit more time, because it, I'm assuming this would take, you know, a couple weeks for you guys to go through some things? Or would you want to come back in January?
I mean, as, as soon as we can, let's say, because, I mean, like you said, I have the, where the engineer and I just, I mean, she can maybe like work something on it in the plan, because...
And...
I'm just trying to get enough time for processing and for Kayla to do her review and the department. It might just cut it a little bit too close for, to be on the January meeting and give them adequate time to...
What is, what is your deadline? Can you just let them know what the deadline is for the January? Oh, this Friday, yes.
Theoretically, you're not digging a basement now, right? You would be digging the basement in the spring.
No, 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 like, for sure, for sure, like...
So I mean, we're not holding your project up, is what I'm saying. So I, I respect Ms. Coleman, or Burzak, I'm sorry, and, and her idea, thought process of, hey, let's get you ready to roll first of February. That's going to give you a minute to figure out what you got. You're not going to lose any spring dig time for a basement. It might be the best of both worlds to give you a minute.
Right, right, no, like, I mean, like I said, I was just trying actually to move it on, like even with, because I was trying to, to clean some, some trees that was falling down and stuff like that, but when we saw that, man, I'm like, I don't know if we can like move forward, like, we was actually frustrated, because like we paid like, I mean, like, to be honest, if we did know that from the beginning, we'll not like purchase that lot either.
Sure.
Not for sure.
So did you purchase this from a, just drive by, realtor?
Realtor.
You did, realtor?
Yeah. They just asked me for the, for the, for the septic, because they don't have a sewer. I mean, they have water and gas and stuff like, and power, but not a sewer, which we did the septic, wherever the perk test, basically, for the septic, which, I mean, came out good, fine, so that's...
And you have a builder building this home for you, or you're building it yourself?
I'm trying, I mean, I do construction, so I'm trying to build it myself, so...
So there's the, the five criteria, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone the request made for six six nine seven zero, Powell Road, parcel two four zero four, one two, two zero zero, zero one eight, for a variance from the Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 3.0, zoning districts, section 3.18, front yard setback requirements. Alpha front and street-side setbacks shall be measured from the center line... Alpha front and street-side setbacks shall be measured from the center line of each road right-of-way in accordance with the township's master plan designation and the road commission of Macomb County as follows: secondary road, 110 feet, 31 Mile Road. And we'll wait for the applicant, because, so I can't make a decision on that. Is there anything else I have to put for postponement?
Um, to February 2nd.
Okay, and we're gonna postpone till February 2nd. What I'm gonna ask you to do is to try to respect that boundary as much as you can to that setback requirement. Try to get creative with it and then make sure you really dig into those five criteria on how we can approve it. Help us figure out how we can make this approved for you and maybe reach out to the, the road commission as well.
Okay.
So I made a motion, sorry.
I support.
Michelle supports?
Motion by Coulson, supported by Mylum. Take a roll?
This is to postpone?
To postpone.
February 6th.
Till February 6th.
Then I'm, 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 yes, to postpone till February 2nd. So you got three yeses.
You gonna do a roll call?
I think we should still, yeah, we'll still do the roll call. Boldston? I approve to postpone. Paul add?
Yes to approve.
All right, thank you, thank you for your patience and we'll look forward to working with you. You been doing okay?
How much land?
Good there, Mr. Chair.
Doing all right, moving along. Section 3, new business? Okay, last one. All right, we're gonna keep things going. 7101 Lindarath, Washington Township zoning ordinance, Article 5.0, site standards, Section 5.1, accessory buildings and structures, Bravo. Accessory buildings in residential districts, four, attached garages.
We saw this.
Bravo. In the R1 Alpha, R1 Bravo, R1 Charlie, and R1 Delta zoning district, the maximum square footage of an attached garage shall not exceed 900 square feet or 33% of the total square footage of the living area of the house excluding basements, whichever is greater. The variance request to exceed the maximum allowable square footage by 325 square feet for parcel 24-04-33-401-013, on the north side of Lindarath, west of Van Dyke. Is there anybody here? How you doing?
Yep, Lawrence Solinger, 7101 Lindarath. Come ask about the variance. I'm sure you've seen the sketches I proposed. It's a part of an entire package, put an addition on the house and then bring the current garage space forward to meet the current front of the house, to square everything off and put the property, the whole footprint into one larger footprint. This would not be encroaching on anybody's boundaries or property lines, it's just to be contained within the present footprint of the house.
Okay. And then there was some, there were some plans, so this is a, this is a larger garage that you're proposing than would normally be, and I'm just looking at some of the numbers that, we did get an email that was sent in later, I don't know if it was included in the packet, but it was from assessing, so they found a discrepancy and made a correction to the property that we're talking about. The calculation was never updated after an addition was put on. So the square footage of the house is actually 1,638 square feet. There's currently a garage that's 675 square feet, that's currently there.
That's correct.
All right.
The only question I have is, what would the actual variance be? I came up with 118 variance, is that accurate?
I, well, if you add on the addition that I planned proposing with the plan that I submitted, the square footage of the house would go up to 2,371 then. So the garage presently, it would be part of the package to go forward. Now, the garage currently today is used as like a hobby rec room, all right? So it's not even been used as a garage, basically. The garage that I'm proposing would be to park our cars in, if that makes any clarity. I don't know if that does or.
Is that gonna be, so you would use the current square footage of the garage, the current portion that you have, and would this be in addition to the garage itself?
The garage that was presently there would stay there. So then, the new garage that would be built in front would be care, just for cars to be parked in, would not be heated or insulated in any way, shape, or form, it'd just be a standard garage.
I was looking at even with the, the addition.
Yes.
If you take the, the 1,636, or 38 square feet, you add the 663 square feet, that's a total of 2,301 square feet of total living space now that you would have. And when I did the math, it was, that would allow for a 767 square foot garage or a 900 square foot garage, because that's greater, so you're still looking at, you're still dealing with the 900 square foot maximum, and if you were looking to get a, if you wanted to add a garage that was 1,225 square feet, that's still a 325 foot variance even with that addition.
There you go. I believe that's correct.
We kind of, we kind of alluded in the last section, that would be trying to figure out some 36 to 50% increase in the allowable garage space that would be there.
This was that last email you just sent us. Dana? Those numbers are right?
Is there, is there, I know you're putting the addition on and if the, if the space in the garage is not even being used as a garage right now, is there any way that maybe you could turn that garage into living, that the current garage that you're using as the hobby space into some sort of living space, so it wouldn't be considered part of the, the actual garage itself?
I asked the building inspector that, David, and I was informed that to do that I have to put air conditioning in it.
Okay.
So it would be an additional cost for me to go that route.
Sure.
At this time, there's really no need for me to do that. I would not rather put more cost into the project, it's already gonna be very high as it is. So if I have to go that route, I guess I have to go that route, but I'm not gonna be very happy about it. This, this is something that, it came about to add this even addition on, because our, if you've noticed the plans in there, in the original house, the bathroom's like eight foot by five foot. One of our bedrooms would then be converted to a bigger bathroom, making that present bathroom a hallway to go to the bigger bedroom. This all came, and it's just one of those ideas that conceptualizes, while you're sitting around in the backyard having a few beers, if you know what I mean? And it just came about and this, we thought we'd go forward and ask for the variance to see where we'd go before we had any architectural plans drawn up.
Right.
Is where we're at with this project.
Okay.
But I didn't think that it would, you know, I didn't think I'd be standing before this board talking this evening, to tell you the truth, but thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming before doing it.
Yes.
It's the best.
I'm trying to get ahead of the game here.
Mr. Coulson, when you talked about the heating and the AC, couldn't he just use a splitter unit, which is relatively?
That's what I would have to do, but I have to add the splitter AC unit into there, that's an additional cost of like.
But it's like, it's under $1,000.
No, it's more.
I just bought one for a house on Roberta Lane to do the same thing.
But I really don't need air conditioning in that garage, I've done it for 15 years without it.
Right.
Right.
I have a question too, are you, are you running a business out of your house?
Am I running a business out of my house? No, I'm not.
There were, there were a couple tankers back there, or else big storage trucks.
There's car trailers back there, on the side of the garage, is that what you're referring to? One is a race car trailer that I'm storing for my friend, who's got terminal cancer right now. Another trailer is my trailer, that I do work on some custom cars over the summer for friends and neighbors. We live on a dirt road. They don't want their custom paint jobs getting smashed up or dented or chipped, so I use that car trailer to transport their vehicles to my garage to do work on their cars. And that's pretty much what I do in that garage. I'm retired now, so I'm doing a little bit more of it. And that's what got this whole program rolling along, is that I have time to look over the construction of the home and be there instead of being at work and wondering what's going on while they're trying to build my house. That's why I waited till this time, and I like to do this.
And I know you have it in here, how big is the current garage?
675 square feet.
675? So even going to adding another 225 feet, that would be for what you're looking at doing, for putting the money in and the project that you're hoping to do, that would help you at all, is, is going to that maximum of the 900 square feet?
Right, so it, okay, get my numbers straight here.
Sure.
Okay, we're at 975 currently, I'm gonna add 555 onto it. So yeah, that puts me over the 900 square footage allowed, right?
Right. And that would be, so I'm trying to.
That comes out to the 325.
Right.
Variance that I need. And it, the reason this always started to be thought process was if I just do the 900 and add that portion onto the front of the existing garages, there'd be no use for that garage, you know, that space would be nonusable to me. In order to park a car there, I need at least 22 feet to park a car. And it comes even right with the front of the present house.
Right.
So like I said, if you look at the plot plan that I presented, it kind of squares off the whole footprint of the property. And the addition, then if you looked at it from the street, you looked at the home, you wouldn't even really acknowledge that the garage would be that deep into the lot, unless you're standing, you know, with a drone looking down on it, naturally.
One of the, one of the problems I'm having right now is we have five criteria that we have to, we have to abide by, and I'm having, struggling with the hardship right now. So wanting to put in a bigger garage and a hardship would be some sort of that enforcement of that ordinance is preventing you from using that space in a reasonable manner. And right now, I feel like it's being used in a reasonable manner. You could increase the space, but it's more of a want, that you would want that, that accessory in that building or the, you know, your workshop in addition to the cars, as opposed to, that's a, that's a definable legal hardship.
The only hardship being in your mind by not getting it.
Right.
I mean, I'm not giving anybody, my neighbors any hardship that I can see. And where we're at, you know, I'm at the end of a dirt road. Only people are gonna go by my house are five neighbors, out of all the people that live in Township.
I agree, and that's, so one of our criteria is unique and that does make your property unique, I agree with that.
And I'm the smallest lot on, on the street.
Usually a hardship has to do with the land itself and not necessarily a personal preference or a, you know, a desire to do something with it.
We got the water.
You got, Rich Amaretto make that comment.
Did he?
Not the water main.
Water.
You have, there's over an acre there, right?
I'm at 1.03 acres. I'm the smallest lot, except for the neighbor to the right of me is of 1.04, everybody else is three to five acres on that lot, on that street. And it's a private lane too.
From a detached accessory structure, he could have up to 1,200 square feet or detached.
If it was detached, that was gonna be.
If it was detached.
Which would be, which would be 10 feet, would have to be 10 feet away from the principal residence. You'd have to maintain that 10 feet in between.
And he could do that without any variance request at all?
You'd have to meet all the other setbacks.
Sure, as long as he didn't. Yeah, and what Mr. Pollack brought up was our DPW director, Rich Amareno, he says that he doesn't see the hardship because of the size. Doesn't see the hardship because of the size.
So you're saying I can have 1,200 square feet, but I have to be built, rest of my addition 10 feet from the present structure?
As a detachment.
Yeah, that's how, yeah, that's how the order, I was just trying to.
Yeah, I, I, I know what you're reading into that, and then to try to put a 10-foot breezeway or passageway between the addition of the house to the garage.
You couldn't structurally attach.
Right.
Yeah. You, you would have to have that.
You'd lose the whole proposal of what I'm trying to do here.
Right.
To put the additional bedroom on and the great room in the back, I'd lose everything. To get that 1,200, if I were to add something to the side of the garage, now I'm going to the east or the west of the house, or to the west of the house to add on to the garage, get the garage space. And it'd still be to the, the setback of the garage. And this gives the aesthetic look, everything is, looks uniform, and the street is what I'm trying to accomplish.
We can ask a few more questions, but if we want, I don't know if there's anyone from the audience, from the public, who wanna make a motion to open it to public comments?
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Notice is hereby given that the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 1st, 2025, in the boardroom of the Washington Township Municipal Building located at 57900 Van Dyke, Washington, Michigan, 48094, for Lawrence Solinger, 7101 Lindarath, Washington Township, Michigan, 48094. By reason of the Washington Township zoning ordinance, Article 5.0, site standards, Section 5.1, accessory buildings and structures, Bravo. Accessory buildings in residential districts, four, attached garages, Bravo. In the R1 Alpha, R1 Bravo, R1 Charlie, and R1 Delta zoning district, the maximum square footage of an attached garage shall not exceed 900 square feet or 33% of the total square footage of the living area of the house excluding basements, whichever is greater. Purpose of the request, to request the variance which if granted would allow the applicant to construct an attached garage that will exceed the maximum allowable square footage by 325 square feet. The property in question's parcel 240433401013. Address, 7101 Lindarath, it's on the north side of Lindarath, west side of Van Dyke. All property owners within 300 feet have received a public notice of the hearing. Is there anybody here? Do you have any correspondence?
Make the motion to close the public hearing?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have any other questions or any, anything further?
I make a motion to deny the request for 7101 Lindarath, parcel 240433-401-013, for a variance from Washington Township zoning ordinance, Article 5.0, site standards, Section 5.1, accessory buildings and structures, B, accessory buildings in the residential district, attached garages, B, in the R1A, R1B, R1C, R1D zoning district, the maximum square footage of the attached garage shall not exceed 900 square feet or 33% of the total square footage of the living area of the house excluding basements, whichever is greater, and not allow for the construction of the detached garage that would exceed the maximum allowable square footage by 325 square feet. This decision was based on the criteria as outlined in the Washington Township zoning ordinance, Section 7.9E, zoning board of appeals, variance review procedures.
You'll need to state your findings on each of the criteria?
Oh, okay, strict enforcement would not cause practical difficulty or hardship. Conditions and circumstances are not unique to this property. Conditions and circumstances were not created by the owner or self-created. Criteria four will confer special privileges. Criteria five will be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Does anyone want to add to Mylum's?
I'll just, I'll second, but as the practical difficulty was my biggest concern, so zoning hardship exists only when strict enforcement of the ordinance would prevent reasonable use of the property, not when it would prevent a preferred design. And therefore, it was self-created as stated, because this is, this is a.
Self-created because I don't want to change that back room into a living space, is that the reason it's being created?
It's because it could be expanded into 900 feet and it, it is considered a reasonable use of the land, the township's not preventing you from using your land as a reasonable, as, as somebody else in the township might want to use it.
Okay.
And therefore, that's where the special privilege would come in, and I'm just looking at my notes, if that'd be a 1,225 square foot attached garage, and I didn't see any other properties that had any ordinances or anything, or any variances for a garage, especially one that's, depending on how you look at it, at a minimum of 33% greater than that. And therefore, the ordinance itself, garages should be subordinate to the actual property itself, and in this case, it seems like it could dominate the facade or, or change the livable area from that street. I know it's a private area and that's why I didn't say anything about the, the uniqueness of that land, it is very unique. And that you're at the cul-de-sac, you're at the back, it's a dirt road, but once we start granting a 33% variance and then somebody else comes forward and attempts to legitimize it with that hardship.
and attempts to legitimize it with that hardship, saying that I want to use this as, as I feel, then we're gonna be running into a bunch of legal issues.
Okay, question for you before I leave. If I were to convert that to living space, do I have to ask for a variance in order to do that and have it reappraised that way? Or does that work?
Yep, right now, we just have to vote on this here.
Okay.
And then, um, we do have Dana here and, and if I believe that you would, if you're not, if you are meeting all the, all the, if you're not asking for a variance request, then you just go through the building department and they will get approved and you won't have to come in front of this board here.
All right, so they just changed that from garage space to living space? Is that the way that works? Okay, thank you.
All right.
I understand now. Thanks.
All right, so I second Michelle's motion.
Okay, so we have motion by Mylum, second by Coulson. Hodston.
Hodston?
Hodston.
We deny. Denies.
Okay.
The proposal, thank you.
Pollad?
Deny.
Yes, sir.
Pollad, deny.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Right. Yes.
Okay. All right, any public comments? Any public comments at this time? All right, ZBA member comments?
I have one. I just have, like to read a statement. Like a disappointed that Bob Sanco had to be removed from the Washington Township Board of Appeals. He was removed based upon the zoning board of appeals ordinance because he resigned from the Washington Township Planning Commission. Therefore, he could not be a member of the zoning board of appeals as appointed member of the planning commission. Bob Sanco is a dedicated public servant for over sixteen years on the planning commission and several years on a zoning board, not only a member, but also serving on both boards as chairman. Bob was, Bob well be missed for his fairness without the feveritism when making his decisions on planning commission and zoning board review. We wish him very well.
Thank you. Thank you. I think when we talk about that, the wealth of knowledge that usually sits in the seat is, is missing from this, from this committee as well.
Definitely missed.
All right, do we have, uh, any Christmas events going on or any holiday events going on?
Oh, you want me in the hot seat?
We do.
You know what? I'm gonna have to refer to the township website. I think it's, uh, December.
December tenth.
December tenth. Hey, listen, you're bringing your baby or something, I heard, right?
I'm hoping to, yeah.
Okay.
Please come out, it's a good time, yes, a lot of people. Fun time in the township, so please come and join us.
It's from seven to eight-thirty?
Yes, it's late.
All right, December tenth, seven to eight-thirty PM. Thank you.
I've heard there's hot cocoa.
There is, that's true. This is a true story.
And a tree lighting.
And Santa.
All right. Uh, anybody else?
No, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Anybody make a motion that, send anybody home?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, thank you.